And I came here in 1986 to run it for myself. I signed the papers and I was owner of the Red Barn Incorporated. People come in here for the experience, more so than I think anything else. And they love the fact that somebody's actually taking the time to listen. Maybe you learn in proportion to how much you listen and care. If you can find that balance between doing what you love, that isn't really work, that might pay the bills, and can resonate with people, and actually to some extent, help people. Without my customers, I would be doing what I don't love, guaranteed.
Welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. If anybody would like an agenda, they are in the plastic sleeve out back. Before we go any farther, I'm going to ask our chairman to please stand and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First up is community notes. Community notes is a time where if anybody has something they would like to speak about that is not currently scheduled to be spoken about tonight, now would be the time to do it. We ask you to come up to the podium, tell us who you are, where you live, and take a few minutes and tell us what you have to say.
Hi, I'm Steve O'Quinn, and I live at 35 Ticonic Street. And this is just to let you all know that tomorrow night, between 5:00 and 8:00, in Dave's place, right across from Mason's Tire of the Park there, this will be our 10th annual North End Night. And it's an event that hasn't been built upon public subsidy, it's been built upon the generosity and work of everyone around. I'm not saying, I mean, Parks and Rec has been great, Mike's been encouraging, as he always is, but I think that the contributions that we gain from the North End is what makes this happen and the effort, and we're really pleased to invite you all. Nathaniel, you better be there. Steve, I'll make sure, just down the street. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Scott McAdoo. I'd like to invite everybody this year, don't forget, to the Centrum Main Fourth of July, formerly known as the Winslow Family Fourth of July. Over in Clinton Fairgrounds in Clinton, we have July 3rd and July 4th. Both days, we have some great events going on. On July 3rd, we have Kids Day, which can have a lot of good fun activities for kids. And then we have the Idol Competition, which is always a good fundraiser. Then we can have, after the Idol Competition, we have a live music. And of course, on July 4th, unfortunately, most people asking, unfortunately, don't have parade this year, but we do have, we're going to have a little thing in the park. Plus, we're also going to have live music during the day, and of course, everything will culminate at night with a very wonderful, large firework display. So, everything starts around noon, noonish, I think, we're still trying to add that details out, but look in the morning sentinel and around town, hopefully, within a week, we should have flyers out, which will give us, give you the full schedule. But July 3rd and 4th, point ahead over in Clinton, at the Clinton Fairgrounds, this year it's going to be, hopefully, a fun packed, celebrate our American, America's birthday, and celebrate in honor our men and women who serve in uniform. Thank you.
Thank you.
Julian Payne, Ward 5. This speech is not about presenting an argument for or against funding for departments, it's about the community having all the facts to make an informed decision. We used to believe the world was flat. And Counselor O'Donnell's favorite line to me was, Julian, can you tell me why Waterville is X amount cost per student cheaper? I'm here today to do just that. I have found the smoking gun. The four-year-old EduCare kids are being counted in the Waterville School population totals, adding 90 nights students to the DOE count. Here is the list clearly indicated. An extra 100 students counted, and underneath shows the real numbers after that factor. Budget meetings, the school board misled the community stating only K through 12 kids were counted in the DOE statistics, even contradicting Eric Haley. Why this matter is adding and counting the four-year-olds, while this matter is, sorry, adding and counting the four-year-olds, it decreases the per pupil cost by about $650 per student, making our schools look underfunded. This set up a chain of events. The advertising and bartering factor became Waterville's cost per student was one of the lowest in the state. Scott Taylor of Colby Faculty instructed counselors using Colby Letterhead to right this wrong, and even threatened to leave the community. This snowballed. In his presentation, Scott Jones stated numerous times, clearly and adamantly, that the EduCare kids were not counted in the state's totals. This now casts doubt on his statistics, and calculations are now out the window. I reached out to Tyler Buckus at the Department of Education, and he informed me that there are many ways of showing per pupil cost. Do you divide by only the pupils on which Waterville residents pay taxes, or do you want to include all students attending? Here is a list of the numerous various factors that can manipulate and change cost per Waterville counts the 99 four-year-old students. Cities such as Falmouth and Scarborough only count K through 12. Inconsistencies between city data and factors specific to your community are not factored into the equation. The cost per student is not the Holy Grail, nor should it be used for leverage. Searching casually online, the capita average income in Waterville, Maine, I found on Spurling, very interestingly and by accident, that their cost per student for Waterville, Maine, independent, is 12,350 per student, higher than the national average. Can someone lend me a minute?
Just, I'll just tell you.
Okay. Sorry. Tyler informed me that this morning, he spoke with Eric Haley's assistant, Paula, and received a cost per student information reflection, EduCare, four-year-old, and other factors will be presented to the public. I asked the mayor and Mike Roy to work with the Department of Education and Paula to present agreed upon cost per student numbers that they feel confident in. It is apparent the community needs a watchdog, level the playing field. Additionally, Eric Haley allowed the video to remain on the school's website, knowing Scott Jones misrepresented the facts about EduCare students. Councilors have a duty to rep, to the residents, and to separate the wheat from the chaff, regardless of ideology. The community cannot be misled, the video needs to come down, and any taxpayer monies obtained dubiously or unknowingly inaccurate information could be and should be a liability for the city. Thank you.
Just a response to that, we got an email late in the day from Paula at the school department. Amy got a copy. There was a discrepancy in the kids that were being counted, and again, I can't say that I have audited these numbers, it's hard for me to comment on it, but from what was presented from Eric, it looked like where we were before in the funding was, I think it was about $9,300 per student, based on the way that the state was calmed, which had us in the bottom 11%. I think it ended up, if somebody can correct me here, about $9,900, which put it at the bottom 20.
That's correct.
100%.
Again, I haven't, I have not audited those numbers, but that is what I got at the end
of the day, and we will certainly look at that and work with Aaron's office to follow up.
Hey, it's 100% better than Julian thought.
All right, yes.
Hi, I'm Scott Jones. I'm Ward 4. Can't be certain, but I think I was just called a liar here in public, in public form. I never claimed that the EduCare numbers were included. I was going by the publicly available data, which is available on the website at the main Department of Education, I had a link to it. This, if you go to the main Department of Education website, this is what you'll get. This is the unadulterated spreadsheet that you can download, all right? It says for Waterville, let me put on my reading glasses, $9,031.61. That's the unadulterated. There's 232 schools that have reported data. That puts us in the bottom 9% for 2016. The gentleman from Ward 5 is correct, that includes the EduCare numbers. So, what happens when you take those out? You change the denominator, right? What happens when you take out those 99 students? My number, based still on this, 9581.34. And the bottom 18%, that puts us up to 190 out of 232 schools. If we want to have a discussion that the bottom 18% is indicative of overspending, is indicative of malfeasance by the student, by the school board, I'm willing to have that discussion. Please, I would like to hear the logic that bottom 18% is somehow missed, is somehow the, shows that we have been lied to or misled. And I also would like to point out, again, I'm going to remind you, that we did a major fundraiser for the auditorium, raising almost $400,000. If the students, if the school board really had all this hidden money, and we, they pulled the wool over my eyes, I'm expecting checks back to all those donors for $400,000, you know? Because clearly, we have, were unable to renovate a school building in half a century. I don't think that's a sign of malfeasance. So, but anyway, I will be glad to share these numbers. I will hand them to Ms. Calder right now. Thank you.
Anybody else for community notes? And I do wanted to say, I, this is not going to turn into debate about cost per student right now.
I just don't like being called a liar.
No, 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 I'm, there was, there was these two points presented, I presented what Eric gave me today.
It's very fine, I never use the word liar in a meeting, I mean, give me a break.
This is community notes. I am trying to keep an orderly meeting, and we will have an orderly meeting, and this isn't going to break down into a community notes debate about cost per student. Facts were presented, again, we had some numbers this afternoon, we are certainly going to look up and follow up with that, with the superintendent of schools. I'm not calling anyone a liar, I'm, I'm saying that there were, there were two sets of numbers that we got, and I haven't audited them.
Gary Day, you're Ward 5. I'd just like to say that I'm disappointed with the school board, for at the first budget meeting, they specifically stated that only K through 12 were counted in the DOE numbers. And as we found out recently, that's not true. The EduCare kids are counted, and that does change the statistics, and it does raise questions as to what other data is questionable in these statistics. Thank you.
Anybody else for community notes?
Hi, I'm Elise Mathias, Ward 6, and I just wanted to express my appreciation to the council for undergoing this delicate issue of the budget and, and school funding, and just express my appreciation. I understand that there are pressures from the federal and state level, and that makes it extra sensitive this year. So, in our work with community and schools, we have taken some opinions about schools, and I'd just like to share with the council, some words from your community about schools and our school support. We think we have the best schools in the, in the state, even if we might not be number one in funding, we certainly have the number one teachers and students, and our families really support our schools. So, Patty, if you don't mind distributing these maybe after the meeting, to our council members and Mayor Isco, we just appreciate your, your work through this budget season. So, thank you.
And I will refrain from any commentary until we get to that point on the budget, but thank you, we will read those. Is there anybody else for community notes, any non-budgetary items? Does it say non-budgetary on them?
Non-budgetary.
Okay.
My name is Paul Lucier, I live on Fieldstone Drive. And I was Dakota officer here for five years, I left in 2004. That was an appointed position, and it was my, my honor to serve in that position. And one thing I learned very quickly is that, in the very beginning, while I met a few people, there were a lot more people that knew who I was, and knew what I was doing, and, and so, it spurred me to be on my best behavior, because I was being watched, not only at work, but outside of work. And so, and so, here we all are. I don't have that position anymore, but I am, it's my honor to serve on the planning board at the mayor's pleasure. And, and so, again, the eyes of the community are upon us. And so, they're on all the city councilors as well. And so, it's important that, as part of this budget process and everything that we all do here, that we appear to be impartial, and we appear to be doing due diligence on all items that come to it. And I was saddened to find out a few weeks ago that there were three city councilors that attended a function for a group, and that not only did they attend that, but they, they were presenters and hosts and disseminated information at that rally or meeting, I'm not sure what.
What was the meeting?
No, I wasn't sure I was allowed to say, it was the...
Friends of Waterville Schools.
There it is.
And everyone was invited.
Right.
Yeah, you could have come too, Paul.
Yeah, I know.
Right, please don't.
Yeah. And so, that's a worthy cause, and we're all friends of the Waterville Schools.
All right, can you please stop interrupting? This is going to be an orderly meeting, and you're going to be a part of it, you're going to be asked to leave. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the eyes of the community are upon us, they're upon you, and so, we, we can't do wrong, and we have to avoid the appearance of wrongdoing. And that's why we have the conflict of interest discussions, and a new policy that was adopted. And, and I'm just disheartened that these particular councilors would be so involved with that, and why, you know, where does it stop? I don't speak for any one group. I think I speak for the silent majority that's out there. And while we all want good schools, good fire, good police, we also want fiscal accountability and fair play without the appearance of the system being rigged. And so, I would hope that in the future, there'd be some consideration given to that, because the eyes of the community are upon us all. Thank you.
We are going to move on to the approval of the consent agenda, could I get a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor? Unfinished business, Resolution 101, 2017.
A resolution provides for override of the mayor's veto. It is all for the council of the city of Waterville acting as official officers and follows that the mayor's veto of Resolution 95, 2017 be overridden.
Move to adopt.
Second.
And we'll open for discussion among the council. Yes, Steve?
I'd like to just put this in like bulleted form to make it go a little quicker. Trash pickup is a necessity, and it's going to be an issue for the city of Waterville regardless of what the economy's like. The second thing that I wanted to tell you is recycling has reduced waste in Waterville by 60% in, in my ward and in most other wards. I don't think anyone could deny that it is one of the most successful programs that we've established. The trash hauler is the most used vehicle in the city, okay? It gets, it's, it's on the road more than any other vehicle. If we buy a split hauler, it'll give us equity, it'll allow us to sell our oldest truck, which has had three transmissions. It's an investment that will take care of our needs for the next five-year contract that we're getting into. Do we want to look beyond five years? I don't think we should. I mean, it, it always kind of reminds me of the, you know, when the home inspector looks at your house and says, those shingles are going to need to be replaced in 25 years? Of course they are, okay? But let's just get through this five years with the new split hauler. And make no mistake, we do have some money in the upcoming budget for trash and recycling. It's not like these numbers that were thrown out, the 238ths and the 133s, we have some of that money set aside for this, okay? And the most important thing is, the Solid Waste Committee has presented us with their best option after studying this for months and months. I mean, we asked a group of people of diverse backgrounds to look into this and make a, a good decision based on what they learned. They gave us that decision, I think we should go with it.
I'm actually going to say, just a few words on this, I actually found this to be a fairly non-controversial veto, it was really about, that last meeting, there was a lot more questions that were raised, and there was some heated discussion, and I thought it warranted some extra time. And I also was just concerned about the commitment to buy something without the funds to do so. It was not, and it was not about stopping recycling, I think I mentioned in my, my veto memo that it's actually been an incredibly successful program, it's one that's been, I think wildly popular with people. And so, it really was about taking some time. We have discovered in the past couple weeks, there actually is $100,000 of bond money still remaining in the public works budget that could be used towards this truck, which will offset some of that $200,000 cost. One of my other concerns was really just, Mark, you seemed very concerned about the ability to do it. Is that just for the next nine months, or is that going forward? I received a call from Sullivan's that, that there was, they were concerned that they felt, and perhaps a member of the Solid Waste Committee or Mark could answer this. Last week, they called and said that they had been told that they were going to be approached for a bid process, to bid on both our trash and recycling, and that that never came through, the ability to bid on both of those things. And I was just wondering if someone could speak to the, to that, and Mark, if you could just kind of give us your thoughts on the ability of the split truck to, to handle that five years of doing both duties.
Good evening, everybody. The comments that Sullivan's made about being approached for a bid on both trash and recycling, that's the way it was bid out originally, and we ended up staying with just the recycling component of the bid. Later in discussions, we told them that we'd probably be bidding it out again after the three-year contract was up. That's all I recall, and...
Not during this, it was not the intent to do a bid.
During their, their session. Unless, we were told to do that, but my assumption was that we would follow through on the three-year program and see where we ended up, and then bid it out again, which we did do recently. So, they weren't excluded from that, they elected to not bid on the recycling when we bid that out separately.
So, we didn't do the bid, just so I'm clear, we didn't do the bids on trash and recycling, just recycling, is what we asked for.
We did both, trash and recycling, and we did one standalone bid on recycling only.
And we advertised it, huh?
We advertised it, yeah.
Thank you.
Sullivan's attended the bid opening, and said they were not going to bid. And that's all I know. I am concerned during this next nine-month period that it is going to be difficult, but I think the, the split unit is going to be a feasible solution to what, what we can do for collection. The only exceptions to that will be holiday collections, where we have to normally do a double run, we won't be able to collect recycling on a double run, the truck won't hold that much volume. And if snow comes, that's going to be a difficult thing too, but it's always that way for trash as well, so. Once a split truck arrives, we'll have the same crew out there, and that should make the job a lot easier and more feasible to take care of.
Thank you for answering. And, council?
Yeah, I just want to say first and foremost, that I am in support of the curbside recycling program, but I'd like to address the council about some things. I go out every week, and I put my knuckles to the doors of my ward, and I talk to my residential taxpayers, and I could tell you, over the course of a couple months, in regards to this particular subject, they expect us to be as frugal as possible, so I'd like to address the council. The issue of curbside recycling is a complicated one. Warning signs of the program would become in jeopardy appeared not too long ago when Sullivan's, our private contractor, attempted to break the contract by complaining it had underbid and was stretched too thin on resources and personnel that they serve a total of 17 municipalities. Since then, we have managed to repair that relationship and now find ourselves at the end of a three-year contract with difficult decisions to make. First and foremost, I'm in support of Waterville's curbside recycling program, but I am also invoking my desire to use residential taxpayer money as frugally as possible. With the city assuming responsibility of the program, we all are in understanding that there are realistic costs attached to it, that compound problems for municipal budget clearly overdrawn and in the red. Appropriating revenue by resolution rather than by an order of appropriation is by definition simply wrong. I do not agree that the city has made a definitive comprehensive case in exhausting all legitimate possibilities and reviewing what it has in existence now, the hall recyclables optionally investigating what is currently out there now in the form of recyclable hollow-type trash transportation in new and used condition, and the actual diagnostics and dynamics of a split type pack-a-truck being able to capably take care of the workload on a 60/40 split. Right now, Sullivan's has trucks that aren't 60/40, they do it all in recycling. Appropriating approximately $239,000 before our fiscal municipal budget is even finalized is unacceptable and unconscionable, in that we should all, as a united council, seek to find and exhaust all options to help minimize an impeding line item that deserves a degree of patience, discussion, and determination. I see the entire picture, as all of you do, and agree in context that we should continue the program. The city for now is fully capable of standing in temporarily while these discussions on cost and feasibility are worked completely out. I would like to see a rebidding process go back out to private haul as a comprehensive answer to what is available now in both new and used equipment capable. City manager Mike Roy makes known funds available from the remaining 2015 bond of $97,830 that can be applied to a new split pack-a-truck, and possibly propose refund money from PERC, Penobscot Energy Recovery Corporation, to the balance of $160,000. In addition, a new hire for nine months would cost an additional $38,585 for a part-time laborer. Let's be reminded, though, of how to appropriately reply this money to help offset a significantly property tax mill rate increase as the highest of priorities. Bottom line, it's still clear and evident that despite this being equity reimbursement from PERC, it is still taxpayer money spent. That is why I take the position of urging the council to demonstrate patience and vote no to sustain the mayor's veto to comprehensively examine all options to our curbside recycling program.
I just want to make a couple of comments, a lot of my comments, I said at the last meeting, so I'll keep it brief. You know, in regards to these, to this particular resolution, you know, I don't want to be hanging our hat on, I don't want the city to be hanging its hat on, 10 to 15 years of the recycling market. The recycling market is, is, is very low, it's nonexistent at this, at the moment. There's really, there's not a, a lot of money out there, not a lot of people out there looking to buy some of this material. So, if we keep stockpiling it, the supply goes up and the demand goes down. So, the market will inevitably never, never make it to that point. By buying a new truck, we're locking in for 10 to 15 years. And what that means is, that we're going to continuously try to find a new place that's going to accept our recycling. EcoMain could very well, for this particular year, we're all set, $0 a ton. Next year, they might charge us $30 a ton, or the year after that, maybe $35 a ton. There's really no end game in sight. I don't want to set the city up for failure, you know, I think a dual recycling truck is, is the wrong way to go. I would like to consider private haul as a, as certainly a possibility. Personally, I, I don't feel that, and I know that a lot of the frugal members of my neighborhood would say the same, that recycling is not, at this, at this moment, is not a necessity, it is a, it is a courtesy on behalf of the city, but it's something that when we're going through some of these tough budget times, and we're talking about the school budget and the revenue shortfalls on the school side, or adding another code enforcement officer, and then all of a sudden, we're comparing the recycling as if it's, it's the Holy Grail and that we can't touch it. I'm opening the discussion to start talking about the other side, let's start exploring different options. The status quo is, is not always the way to go, and there are certainly other options out there, and that's all I want to say. And that's all I wanna say.
Any other discussion from the council?
I'd just like to say a few things. You know, I also sat on the municipal solid waste committee with Nick, and I think we did a lot of hard work. I think that trash pickup and recycling pickup are vital services that we need to maintain. And I think that this is an important investment that we can make as a city in buying the dual packer. And long-term, I think that bringing this service in-house is what's gonna ultimately be more cost-effective. So I would like to maintain the position that we move forward with the recommendations from the municipal solid waste committee. And those are just my thoughts.
And, Mark, you feel that truck has the capacity to do both? To handle, to pick up all the recycling in one run? The way, more like, your roots won't change, you'll just be picking that up?
It does have the capacity for daily collection. However, if we have a double pickup, it won't be able to handle it. Right now Sullivan's has to borrow one of our trucks to do a double pickup.
Can you explain... Yeah. Can you just explain what the double pickup is?
If a holiday falls on a Monday, we normally pick up trash for both days on Monday and Tuesdays. We pick up on Tuesday. We won't be able to do that with recycling.
Can I ask a question? We are currently picking up every other week. If we have a split truck, would we be picking up every week?
Yes.
Yeah, so we wouldn't have that big buildup van after holidays that we have now because the pickup would be more frequent.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
We still would not be able to do a double collection for a holiday.
Right, but we probably wouldn't need to.
We still have the spare truck where we can pick up one of those days. The split truck would then be used for trash for the double pickup. It would haul exclusively trash on the holiday pickup. It'd be a little complicated, but we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Will you be as productive if you're picking up both at the same time as opposed to just picking up trash or just picking up recycling?
Yes, it'd be a lot more productive and more efficient. And the volume will be less if we do it on a weekly basis than it is now. If people are waiting two weeks, it piles right up pretty good, you know? So, on a weekly basis, it'd be more manageable.
Yeah.
And what happens if that truck goes down? Are you gonna be asking for another truck a few years from now to make sure that we have two trucks going at the same time?
Possibly. In my thoughts, if the truck needs service, has to be taken out of service for routine maintenance, we may do that after hours and pay a little overtime to the mechanics rather than take it off and not have it available. If it does break down, we'll have to use the spare truck and...
You'll keep one spare truck?
We'll keep one spare truck that's a 25 cubic yard single packer. We'd have to do the trash.
So in that instance, we'd probably be losing one service or the other, or we'd have to buy a new truck?
Right.
What are you talking about?
What I'm getting at is that eventually, we're gonna need... If we buy one truck now, eventually, we'll need a second truck.
Yep, that could be 10 to 12 years.
So again...
10 to 12 years from now.
Well, that's... No, no, it's not 10 to 12 years from now. What he's saying is that he's only gonna have one backup truck, one full-size backup truck. If that one truck, the dual truck, goes down, you're gonna use that single truck and you're gonna actually sacrifice either recycling or solid waste for that day.
We'd have to sacrifice recycling.
Or you'd just throw it all away. Buy another dual truck to be able to...
Or the people can wait another week like they do now.
You'd throw it all away.
Yeah, like we do now.
Yeah. It'd just be a matter of waiting one more week.
Right.
Hopefully.
Be stinky.
You've been very thoughtful about this, Mark, and thank you for your time.
I think all the thoughts are very thoughtful. Is there any more discussion or questions from the council before I turn it over to the public? Questions from the public. If you have questions, please take turns coming up to the podium and tell us who you are.
Yeah, of course.
Tom Ferris, 35 Highland Ave here in Waterville. Just wondering, and excuse my ignorance, but how much money has the city saved in terms of tipping fees since initiating recycling? Because, I mean, and I don't know the numbers, but I'm wondering if per year, you know, we could show how much money we were saving, then it might make, you know, the idea of spending money on the truck a little easier to swallow. Certainly would for me.
I will defer to Mark or Mike for that.
Tipping fees, it's difficult to tell because the trash volume immediately went down when we introduced pay-as-you-drown. So a lot of it was either coming in from out of town. People might have gone to private haulers. Before, we were budgeting at just under 5,000 tons a year. And that was about a half a million dollars in cost. So now we're at 1,900 tons a year. And that would be 190,000.
So we're saving a couple hundred thousand a year.
300,000.
Right.
Yeah.
So... So it was a substantial financial drop.
Right, well, right, right, yes. The recycling's been costing us 75,000.
Right, it's 200.
But to do that, to pick up now, would be 130,000 more? It'd be 230,000 or 200,000?
That's what our current cost is.
It'd be 200,000 to continue to pick up recycling private.
So we're still saving money?
So the best reason why they wanna buy the truck? Because if, you know, doing it privately, it would be less, more costly?
To be clear, the EcoMaine doesn't charge us anything per ton for the recycling currently. They only renew it every year. There is a chance that EcoMaine, and I'm not saying this scabbages, I'm just saying, there is a chance that EcoMaine could come back and say, alright, it's gonna be $15 a ton.
Aren't they locked into the zero price for years, Mike?
Not years, one year, one year, John.
I don't know.
It's one year.
I thought it was a...
One year.
...repeating contract.
They've been renewing it every year, but it's one year, one-year contracts.
Can I ask one more question?
If you... Yes.
But even if that happened, even if we were charged 30 or 35 bucks a ton, if you do the math, we're still saving money by doing the, like, a substantial amount. Is that correct or am I wrong?
That's correct.
Oh, yeah. What's the cost of energy on trash?
About $100 a ton right now. If we factor in the transportation tipping and processing.
Keep in mind that EcoMaine is in South Portland, and we have to haul it down to South Portland. Nordwark is much shorter and it's $72 a ton somewhere in there is what they're gonna be driving us. So we're dropping our recycling off to Nordwark, and then they would be taking it down to South Portland for a premium that we would pay.
Right, that'd be 37.50 a ton to have it processed and transported to EcoMaine.
Here's a question.
So if it went up to $30 a ton, it would be actually closer, sorry, up to $70 a ton?
If we ever, if for some reason, there was ever a reason not to do recycling, you could fill both bins with trash?
Sure.
You'd trash, you'd trash.
Right.
We'd be right back to the 4,500 tons a year probably.
And I know there were other questions from the audience. Can you come up and just, to the podium? And Julian, after I've just come up?
Hi, Brad Sherwood, Ward 5. Last week, I was in Concord, New Hampshire at a residence, and I asked the person about, because I saw their purple bags there. So I asked him about it. In this land where, the state where, you know, they have no income tax, they have high property taxes and they pay $5 per bag there. So I'm wondering, has anybody considered raising the price of the purple bags slightly?
Actually, I think... I believe there's gonna be a discussion about that tonight, but it won't be about raising the prices if I'm speaking accurately. Don't cause a revolt in here.
Julian Payne, Ward 5, and this is less heated, so Nick Champagne's my counselor. I just had a few real quick questions. The cost of the truck compared to a regular truck, so that if it turned out we weren't recycling and we were using it purely for garbage, how much would it be out if we just bought a plain, regular truck? Will the city, the mechanics be able to work on a specialty truck? I know my Lamborghini, I can't get serviced here. And, that's a joke, by the way, don't put my taxes up. And are they able to work on specialty units like that? Are parts readily available? Should there be problems? What happens on snow days? And is there a different pay scale for the city employee on the recycle side to the garbage side? Thank you.
No, but I'll defer to Mark on the rest.
There would be no difference in maintaining the double packer, the split packer versus a single unit. The components are all the same, the rams, the hydraulics, everything's the same. It's just two separate compacted units. There'll be no change in pay scale.
So on a regular unit, if your piston's broke on a compacture, you'd replace one. On this unit, you could have a piston blow out on one side and then later the other, you're doing double parts on that truck?
Yeah, could be, we can keep those at start.
Who knows what the parts are? This guy, just two levels.
Essentially, you're really got two trucks. Two trucks to maintain parts, two boxes.
Right. So, Mark, and the cost compared to another?
About 50,000 more than conventional packers, about 150,000. Dual packer system is about 200,000.
Which will give us more equity too, because we have a truck that's worth more that we're buying, so we'll have more equity in it and we'll get more for it when it's time to sell it.
I thought you told me there was no used trucks on the market.
There's none.
Yes.
I checked in Charlie's.
Actually, I did research on that over the last week, and I thought some used trucks, but not that we would wanna buy.
And actually, I think a lot of people took two weeks and put a lot of time into it, and I thank you. I mean, one way or another, it's gonna cost us some money. These are all great questions and great discussions points, and I appreciate Solid Waste Committee bearing with us while we took a pause. Counselor?
Just wanna remind people, you know, great arguments on both, but I just want to make very crystal clear that we are in the middle of doing this appropriating and approving money via resolution rather than by order of appropriation before our municipal budget is even finalized. So we're basically saying we're willing to put the cart before the horse, which is taxpayer money. This is real money from taxpayers that I believe if we execute it without patience and without exhausting all possibilities, I think it's wrong. And the fact of the matter is, is that the overwhelming majority, at least in my neighborhood, and I find it very difficult to understand, it's not in everybody's neighborhood, that property taxes are an issue. And, you know, I wanna make sure that you guys realize what we're voting on here. We're voting for putting money forward that we don't even have. The municipal budget is in the red. We are overdrawn. We all know that. We are all simply waiting on what the schools are gonna get from state funding subsidy. We're waiting. We are one of the very few municipalities that wait as long as we wait to find out what the end result is, is what's coming down from the state to fund the schools, which to me is a little bit higher priority to find that out than it is about recycling. That could wait. Now, this is what I'm talking about. This is about taxpayer money. I just wanna reaffirm that.
I just feel that the city has, we have kicked the can down the road enough. Eventually, we're gonna need a new truck. It's on three transmissions. It's gonna have to happen. There's some money left from PERC, and we got some money left from a bond.
So, Mike, will that money not be spent until we pass the budget?
That's a point I wanna make. Because the resolution that's in question, that the mayor vetoed, is here. And that resolution does not have $1 sign in it. All it says is a resolution in support of the recommendations from the Solid Waste Committee. This resolution does not authorize any spending. And I thought we made that clear at the last council meeting, that you would all have the opportunity to decide on the spending when we get into the budget. But this resolution says nothing about spending money.
We're resolving...
You're authorizing money.
Well, we're resolving that that would basically be part of the budget discussion if I'm correct about that.
Right.
We haven't, we already have the public works budget?
It will be part of the public works budget discussion.
I'm Paul Lucier again. And I must say, we all love that new truck smell. And I just wanna commend Public Works for having a spare packer truck. Because even with the best mechanics you can have, sometimes a part is not available. There's nothing like a spare. Now, I deal with a lot of trucks. I buy materials from companies that have trucks, lots of trucks, old trucks. And typically, there's one outfit. They have four trucks on the road, but they own six because two are in various stages of repair or they're repaired and waiting for another one to break. These large trucks are repairable. It's unbelievable how much they can repair on them and at what point is it beyond repairing. I would tell you that most of the contractors I buy from don't ever plan on getting rid of their old trucks. But I'm sure it's because they just love them so much.
Thank you. All right, is there any other questions? Or if we're probably ready for a vote on this, we've exhausted the discussion on it. We will call for a vote. Patty, why don't you go ahead? And can you just explain what the yes or no is?
Okay, so the resolution on the floor is to override the mayor's veto. So the yes vote overrides the veto and no vote doesn't override the veto. Is that clear?
Yes. We're gonna get confusing, so it's just...
Do you want me to do a roll call or are we just gonna do a show of hands?
Can we just do a show of hands? All in favor, which would be a yes.
Of overriding the veto.
All opposed. Vote is five to two. And next, we have Order 982017.
Move three but ten only.
Take a second? Second? All in favor?
An order providing for approval of forfeiture.
Move to adopt.
Second?
Is there any discussion on the approval of forfeiture? I'll get a roll call.
Counselor Stoll?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Blessing?
Yes.
Counselor Mayu?
Yes.
Counselor Champagne?
Yes.
Counselor T?
Yes.
Counselor Jucon?
Yes.
Four, seven in favor and zero votes.
All right. Brad, this is your big moment. Resolution 102, 2017.
A resolution providing for a contract extension waste-zero pay-as-you-drown trash bag. Fear resolved by the city, Waddle City Council, here is Miss Foster that the city hereby authorizes the extension of a contract for supply of pay-as-you-drown pay-in trash bags for waste-zero of Raleigh North Carolina for the period of July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018, and its falling per-unit service fee charge. Bag size small, 15 gallons, service fee 23.28 cents. Does that sound right? Large, 30 gallons, 34.75 cents.
Move to adopt.
Second?
All right. Who's here to tell us if this is more expensive or cheaper than what we're paying now?
Yeah, definitely cheaper than what we're paying now.
What's the price differential?
Well, it's on the memo that Mark attached to the resolution. And he did a good job summarizing the costs, what we're paying now and what we will be paying after July 1st. Paying 67,495 now, and it'll be 63,765, so almost $4,000.
So...
But we don't wanna increase the price of the bags.
It just went down two cents per bag. Two cents per bag.
Nice to agree, Mike. Nice to agree.
Is there counsel discussion questions on this? Questions from the audience, yes?
How many bags did we sell last year?
Good question.
Is that in the memo? How are we doing? We're budgeting for 200,000 units, so 150,000 large bags, 50,000 small bags. So if you want a dollar bag, just...
So, Michael, didn't you say that we sold a lot less bags than we thought we were gonna? Last time I talked to you?
I'm sorry, I...
Is this budgeted numbers or what we actually sold? Because then, Mike, I thought you had just recently told me that we sold less bags than projected.
We did sell less bags than what we originally projected.
So was this a budgeting number, the 150 and 50?
Yes.
Yeah.
The current budget here.
Current budget?
Yes. So I don't know where we're at as far as totals right now. We are a little bit below, but I saw the trend.
Right. So a year ago, we estimated we'd sell so many of the small bags, so many of the large ones. What we're saying is we haven't sold quite as many current in this 12-month cycle than what we expected we would. But I think the 150 and the 200,000 total is still fairly close. I mean, as close as we can get.
Jack?
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, because when we look back over the trend, right? To clarify that the trend, it started to go up more than we anticipated initially. And now it's kind of, you know, leveled. now it's kind of, what, you know, leveled out, so to speak. And now we've found a number that it's slightly lower than what you estimated.
Right. There was quite a surge at the beginning, you're right.
Yeah.
Right. And that's definitely plateaued and gone a little bit down.
Yeah, makes sense.
Questions or comments from the council before we ask the public? Mr. Sherwood, and then Mr. Payne.
Brad Sherwood again. I just wanted to point out something, that is, if we are going to be taking over the recycling ourselves at the city, one of the issues is that there are people who cheat the system by putting garbage in the recycling. And right on my street, and they put them in green recycle bags, but they're full of household garbage, and they don't buy any purple bags. So if you see people that are doing that, take the time, put in the energy to either talk to them or report them, instead of letting this happen to them, because now we will be having to pay for all this, sorting all this garbage out of the recycling and having it disposed of.
We don't have any green.
We don't have any green recycle, no, we don't, but they get them, they buy them somewhere, and they're putting garbage in them, and it's going to the recycling truck. Have you heard that from your guys?
I've seen them all do it, but I'm not certain that they're being collected.
Okay. Well, it will be collecting it in a few weeks, I think, we won't be picking it up.
Mr. Payne?
I did just want to point out really quickly that I believe the decline in the purple bags that Mike is talking about is simply due to the fact that the community isn't as certain as to what's going to happen. So they're not picking up a five-pack or a six-pack of purple bags, they're guardedly buying them one at a time. So I think, no, I mean, sorry, a bundle, a packet at a time. Whereas last year, I knew recycling was, wasn't a debate, and I'd buy five or six rolls of them. So I think with the debate out there, people aren't stockpiling the packs as easily, because misinformed or not knowing, they're uncertain the future of what their bags will get them.
Any other comments on accepting this waste zero pay-as-you throw trash bag contract? No? We'll take a vote. All in favor? In the end, we'll... Next is Resolution 103-2017.
A resolution providing for issuance of a pole permit to Central Main Power and Fairpoint New England on Appleton Street. Be resolved by the city council of the city of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows, that the city council hereby authorize the issuance of a pole permit to Central Main Power and Fairpoint New England. This permit will allow the installation of one utility pole located approximately eighty feet west of existing pole number five on Appleton Street.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Are they moving a pole, Mike, or they?
Yeah, I think they're moving it.
All in favor? Next is Order 104-2017.
An order providing for sale of city property nineteen Summer Street. Here, here, I ordered by the water city council acting as municipal officers, that the tax-acquired multifamily building located at nineteen Summer Street be sold to Brownhouse Properties for the sum of nineteen thousand three hundred dollars, had that said sum be deposited in the city's South End Equity Improvement Fund, once all taxes, fees, et cetera, paid.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, we will open for discussion, Mike, if you, I don't know if you have anything you want to say, and then one discussion among the council.
A little background on this property, because it's been a number of years that it's taken to get to this point with the foreclosure. There was a very, very difficult time figuring out who the actual owner was, and the title changed hands a number of times, and we'd send a foreclosure notice to one owner only to find out it should have gone to another owner, so it took a long time, and Linda stuck right to it, and finally, we got the releases that we needed. When she and I looked at it a few months ago, and maybe Mark was there too, it was our feeling that probably it should be demolished at that point. We were doubtful we'd find anyone that would want to buy it, fix it, so we initially came, we're going to come to the council and say, city should demolish it, but there are people that were interested in foreclosed properties, not just this one, but a number of others, and lo and behold, people asked, well, can we buy it? So we asked for bids, we received just one bid, and you'll see that in the summary on the, on the order, the bid of nineteen thousand dollars to purchase it. So I recommend very strongly that we look at selling that property and allowing us to recoup the back taxes, which is seventy-three, seventy-five hundred dollars. Instead of having to spend twelve to fifteen thousand to demolish it, we can sell it for nineteen, repay the taxes, put the rest of the money in the South End Neighborhood Improvement Fund.
Get back, and get it back on the tax rolls.
Oh, and, and keep it on the tax roll, instead of having that one lot be a city-owned lot for who knows how long, which we have to maintain, mow, whatever. So I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Can you describe the situation on, on how your people in the city came up with the idea that it should be demolished?
Well, I think part of the reason is we're not familiar with what it actually costs to do that kind of rehab work. So when you look at the outside porch, which is three stories, you look at the porch and say, wow, I'm going to want to have to tackle that. But if you're in business of doing that over and over again for properties, like the bidder that's interested in buying it is, and have your own crew that does that kind of work over and over again, it's not quite so daunting. So we don't have that practical experience of, well, what would it take to take that cost, to take that porch down, build a new one? What would it take to go inside and redo the inside finish on all three floors? And it just was overwhelming to us when we looked at it. Structurally, the building, pretty solid. The inside is really in terrible shape in terms of smell and garbage inside and everything else, which I think also contributed to the way we looked at it when we went inside.
Okay.
So Mike and I walked through this.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I should have said that we did have a site inspection. Thank you, Jackie. I shouldn't have mentioned that.
Yeah, and I really appreciate that, and we met with everyone, and we walked through the building, and I believe it sat for five years.
And that's, I think that's our guess, that's our best guess, is four to five years it's been empty.
Yeah, so it's, it's sat for five years, and without any lifeblood going through it, no heat, water, and it's sat in the elements. And I believe there's water damage, right, in the front?
Yes.
On the first floor, there was a heating pipe burst?
Yeah, I think that's our theory, is that, you know, it wasn't completely drained, so the radiator in the front room burst, water got on the floor, wooden floor, the floor buckled. Yep.
It's in really rough shape.
It's in rough shape.
And when we walked through it, you know, I, I want to say that I appreciate you looking for ways to add the, you know, value, money to the South End Improvement Fund. But it would be my recommendation that this building not be saved. You know, not every house is worth saving, as you know, as we've talked about, that we just disagree on this, that this building shouldn't be saved. You know, that there's an opportunity here for the South End to tear it down and sell that lot two in a butter, and expand someone else's property. Or even sell it to someone, and they build a new single-family home. Either one of these situations would be more in line with the mission and the vision of the strategic plan that the South End came up with, Neighborhood Association came up with in 2006. And, you know, these opportunities are rare, because we have to go through the rigmarole of acquiring them and then clearing them. And when I think about a building that has sat for five years in the elements, it just doesn't make sense to me, to, this is not one to preserve.
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
Jackie, is that your own personal opinion, or was a third-party inspection saying that the building should be condemned?
That is my position. Yeah, that is my position, and it is the position of the Neighborhood Association when I spoke with members of that, in terms of how would they like to see the neighborhood improved, how we could use funds from the South End Capital Improvement Fund, which that's its purpose, to be used, that rather than adding those funds in, that we use the funds to tear down that building.
Well, what if, counsel?
Can we hear from the bidder, as far as the salvageability of the, of this?
Yeah.
And, and of course, he has a much more experience and...
Does this for a living.
Does this for a living, so his, his honest opinion about what would take to get, to renovate this building and make, bring it up to code?
This would have to be reviewed by code enforcement officer in order for an occupancy permit to be issued, correct, Mike? In order for an occupancy permit to be issued, it would have to be inspected by the code enforcement officer, right?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, before, if we were to sell it to Brownhouse Properties, they'd have to come in and get a permit, and in the course of their work, I'm sure our code enforcement officer would be stopping by periodically, see how they're doing. He might have questions of guards, of whoever it is, that we have in the code enforcement position, so...
He'd be retiring July twenty-eighth.
At some point, when he gets done, code enforcement officer shows up, you know...
Definitely, yeah.
Yeah, and, and we look at what's been completed.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sherwood Booker, I'm the owner, co-owner of Brownhouse Properties. We've been doing this type of work for close to forty years now. We specialize in buying foreclosures and tax-acquired properties, rehabbing them and putting them back on the tax rolls. This particular property, I know she talked about it being open to the elements, it has an intact metal roof, has all vinyl windows in it that were closed, so it does not get exposed to the weather on the inside at all. Granted, the stairways in the back are in rough shape, but we, we do this for a living, it's what we do, we know how to do that. We take, tear it out, put a new one in, it's not that expensive to do. I have my own construction crew that works with us. We estimate somewhere between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars to put that building back online.
So Booker, you've seen worst realty property than this?
Oh, God, does it sound dull compared to some of the stuff we've bought.
Okay. That's what I, I wanted to get your opinion on that.
And, 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 because we've, we've done business before, collectively, was it like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in property, I mean, a hundred, over, well over a hundred thousand dollars in property taxes?
Yes.
Based on buildings you've put back online and...
Hundred seventy.
Thank you.
Fifty-five percent.
That you've put back online and fixed up, just as much a part of picking up neighborhoods.
Yes.
Yeah.
We do it all the time, and we don't come to you and ask you for a tax break.
No.
We buy all our materials locally, we employ people locally, we don't bring them in from out of state, we, hopefully, we stimulate the economy in our community.
Can I ask you a question? When you have a building that you buy that has had water damage in the past, do you do a, like, mold inspection?
We, we look to see where the water damage is. This particular property, the only water damage we could find is in a ground floor living room in the front of the building. It has a hardwood floor like this, the baseboard radiation ruptured, had the limited amount of water in it, it ran out on the floor. The floor was covered with a carpet, so it, it held the water against the wood until it buckled like this. You take the carpet out, you take the wood out, put new floor down, you're colder.
And can I ask just one more question?
Sure.
Is this going to be, like, when you're finished with it, is it your intent that it's going to be like, you know, a minimum upgrade so that it matches the rest of the neighborhood?
Hopefully, it'll look better than the rest of the immediate neighborhood.
My second part, are you planning on making it something better?
Yes, yes, as we do all our properties.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions?
Could I mention something?
Yes, of course.
How we purchased a property from the city on Grove Street? The inside of Grove Street was much worse than the inside of this one. I think, I think Mike and Linda both saw pictures of the inside of Grove Street when we finished.
Yeah.
I, I don't think there was a, I thought they were very nice units. I've been, I'm living in one, that's for sure. That's what we do to every property we purchase.
Yeah, I take it for you.
The recyclers have been there for two weeks, you guys don't skip the clean there?
Excuse me, we're going to have more to the meeting.
I think if we had seen Grove Street before we went and looked at this one last winter, we would better understood what you could do to fix the place up, because you did do a very nice job.
Thank you. Also? So...
Yeah, I don't think that's a question of whether or not, I personally just think that this building just should not have been put out to bid again, that it, like, at the end of the day...
I, I guess I just have a concern that we have a group of people who have absolutely no idea about professional building inspection making these kinds of judgments.
I, I would say, so in my neighborhood, abandoned houses, we know in Waterville are a problem. They're in every ward. I have two in my neighborhood, and my, my neighbors are super concerned about it, and I've talked to every single person whose house is in, in a couple blocks radius of them. One has been abandoned for about eight years, somewhere between five and eight years, the other has been abandoned for, I think, eighteen months to two years. And the, the neighborhood consensus is that they want the, the house that's been abandoned longer to be, to be taken out. There's a neighbor who's really interested in buying that lot, and they, you know, and sort of opening up that space. So I'm wondering, like, to what extent the, the opinion of the neighbors in this case carries weight? It sounds like Jackie has talked to the Neighborhood Association, and it's their desire to follow the strategic plan and have the green space, or sell it two in a butter.
Sure, I guess my question would be, is this the first time that this is coming up? And I'm not asking this to be belligerent, it's a legit question.
Yeah.
Or did you not know this was in the bidding process, and then, and you got the immediate neighbors to talk about it?
We did not know it was in the bidding process. I mean, that was kind of a surprise to find out that it was, I mean, prior to finding out, right, that it was up for sale, that would be on the agenda. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Because it was a part of a slate.
And have you talked to the butters to see if they want, who would want to buy it?
I know that there was one guy who was pulling up the fence, because he...
Right, I mean, I guess that's my concern.
...to protect his parking, if I might be interested, but I don't know.
Whereas if the property's fixed up, I would think that would alleviate. Is it the yellow house in your neighborhood?
There's one that's tan and one that's white. I'll show them to you.
I know which one.
I'm working on it, yeah.
Gary.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Booker for everything he's done for our community and for increasing our taxes. I think the problem that the city of Waterville is in right now is partly due to our decrease in the tax base. We need to increase the tax base, and if we have people that are willing to invest in the community, I don't think that it's up to us or any counselors to advocate for special interest groups to compete in the free market. So I think that the city should do everything they can to either put it out to bid, sell a property, increase the tax base. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment. It seems to me that this, these issues with the bidding coming through seems to happen more and more often, where we're scrutinizing the bidders that are coming to us. We're asking these people to come and, and bid on these, on these properties, on, on pieces, on a service for the city. I don't want to get the reputation as a city to be scrutinizing every bidder that's bidding on our, on our product. In fact, I would love from anybody and more people to bid, because I think it would make a more competitive process. I think this one, we have one, one bidder on this particular property, the next one they're going to be discussing, we have three. We start scrutinizing the, the bidders and what they intend on doing with it, we're, we're going to end up with zero. And you know what? We're going to end up with all these properties on our own, because no one's going to want to bid on any of our properties anymore, so.
All right, I mean, I guess, I think the next point, if we're going to be, have these kind of discussions, this should take place before the bidding process, before these properties are put out to bid, because it is, there is reputational risk to asking people to come and bid, and then they show up with a decent offer to fix up a property, and then we scrutinize them. So, you know, my recommendation is we certainly go with this bid. I think in the future, if there's an issue with that, the council and Mike can work together to come up with a different process at the time, you know, of working with the neighborhoods before properties are put out to bid, if they are tax-acquired. I think that would, that would be the appropriate way to do that in the future, and I think that's something that we can be done, and probably in the future, and would probably satisfy all parties involved in the situations. Yes?
I'd just like to say, this has been an issue that has been around for a long time, and I've worked with the South End Neighborhood Association, and certainly understand that it is the desire of the neighborhood to increase green spaces and to de-densify that neighborhood. Something that we've previously discussed, and I know we've spoken with Mike Roy about that, is to offer city-acquired properties such as this, offer to homeowner-occupied buyers first, before these would be sold to a landlord situation, so that it is creating more owner-owned buildings. I know that we have a apartment rate of about sixty-five to seventy percent in this city, and so I think that with tax-acquired properties, it's a unique opportunity for us to increase more homeownership, and... And, you know, not saying that we don't have a excellent need for quality rental units, but, you know, I think that these are great opportunities for us to maybe say, let's look for homeowners with our city-owned properties. And certainly, we do want to encourage a lot of different bidders, and so maybe we do need to look, as Nick said, to...
I was just suggesting, perhaps the South End Neighborhood Association could get together and by chance form a group or a corporation where you could place a bid on a, on a property.
I think they do. Jackie, isn't...
We're not a corporation, but I'm pretty sure that's, yeah, the Waterville County Land Trust, which is separate. They are their own nonprofit, and they try to...
I don't, I don't know that they knew about it, but, I don't have any.
Sure. I appreciate that. And, and just, just in the sense of summary here, you know, I've actually talked to some, to the members of this family, and we've actually talked about the mutual agreement that we need more homeowners in the city of Waterville. And, and so, actually, the owners of Brown House Properties believe that too, even though their business is the business of rentals. I think this particular property, my understanding, is clearly set up in an apartment-type unit. Again, all relevant points tonight that we, that we appreciate, but I feel like this property was already put out to bid. You're here. This is gonna be an investment, and I, I think if we're looking at process changes, that is something that should be done in the future, not now while we have a viable bid in front of us. And, and I know that the bookers, you know, are part of trying to rebuild Waterville and part of that mission, and, and understand all of our dire needs in this area. So, is there any other discussion on the council? Yes, please come up, tell us who you are and where you live.
I'm Paula Raymond, and I now reside in Ward Seven. I've been here for about four months on eighty Silver Street. And I've been a member of the South End Neighborhood Association for about seven years. And the Quality of Life Committee branched off about two years ago, because we realized that while the center organization was all about socialization and building camaraderie and community awareness, there were also some concerns that we had as a Quality of Life Committee. And so we branched off and created a group that focuses on that issue. I do want to say that in my time working with the city, I've really had a, a lot of good rapport with them. Mike and I have been in dialogue for about two years. We've worked on different issues. And that's been a, a very refreshing thing, because it is always you hear about your city administrator getting along or, you know, that sort of thing. And, and we've had a very good rapport. I've been in touch with the Department of Works. I've been in touch with Park and Rec. I've been in touch with the Police Department. We've just, we're building, the Quality of Life Committee are building a rapport with all of the departments. And we give and take. And it's been a refreshing and a very rewarding piece for me, quite honestly. I always like to dispute claims that things are not working. I prefer a positive proactive approach. And so I always like to be able to come back to a meeting and saying, well, they did this and they did this. We even had city department heads come to our meetings to explain why they can do some things and why they cannot do some things. And it helped the communities, people that came to those meetings to understand and to go back home at least being willing to listen and, and contribute in a different way and not be so angry with what they don't know, which happens a lot of the time. Our concern as a community, as a Waterville Community Land Trust, and that's who I'm representing tonight, is the idea, and she expressed that quite clearly, of more rental in the South End Neighborhood Association. We are encouraging, and I know that Mike agrees with us, that we should be working towards single-family ownership. And that's what our goal is in that community. It is inundated with rentals at this time. It doesn't make it a good or a bad thing, but the South End already has a reputation and is something that you've expressed actually in a, in a Colby Echo interview that you had. And it's a misunderstanding of, of who we are and what we represent. I would encourage, I appreciate what you said about being a bidder and that sort of thing, and that we aren't here to, to do pros and cons about who's bidding and who's not bidding and why they're bidding and the quality of work that they do. But it is about the quality of, of living. And when you have people who come into the community and leave rubbish, as Mr., as the gentleman said a bit ago, for two weeks on the side, when you have broken windows in certain places and when you just have, and we don't know who owns them or who doesn't own them, it just doesn't fare well. And we're working hard to clean that up, and we're working hard to clean it up with our city administrators, with the different departments. It's been a two-year process. We've gotten a lot done. Some of you know the different projects that we've accomplished. And again, this year, we're doing more. Taking down Nineteen Summer Street for us is an investment. It isn't a cost. It's an investment. It means that we're going to raise it, we're going to clear the land, and we have, we can look at other options. And I guess I, I feel that we should have that opportunity to do that. I, I believe firmly, I truly do that, we're on the same page, that Mike and I are on the same side of the, of the, the playing field, just from different angles. And his job is to bring in revenue, and I get that. And when I first received his email and he expressed that he could sell these two properties, the other one that's coming up, my first response was, great, let's do it. But then I was given some more information to say, let's back up, let's take a look at it and see where it best serves the community, because that's been our job for sixteen years and specifically for the last two years with the Quality of Life Committee. So I, I would appreciate that we do take the seat best and take a look at how does the community benefit from more rental property. And just be careful about that. And that's my take on it. No questions? Good. I was hoping everybody had left.
All right. Yes, sir, come up. Say your name, tell us who you are, where you live.
My name is Bill Bassford. I live over on Dolphin Street. It sounds to me like we need a better explanation of how these properties are advertised for bid. They go in the newspaper? Are they on the city's website? What is?
They go in the newspaper. Yep.
Okay, what part of the newspaper?
In the legal section.
Oh, those things with all the little, little fine?
Yeah, that.
That is the legal process, though. I just don't wanna get into this thing where we're acting like this is some weird shady process. This is, that is the legal process of, of handling.
Okay, so you had to do that, but could you also put in a display ad that more people will notice, so you might get more bids? You know, spend a few bucks extra for a display ad with a...
We'll go to that stage if we don't get bids in the first stage that we think are...
Sometimes we don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, then we'll ramp it up.
But if we, we did that, we might get, you know, four or five bids instead of one? Something like that?
Possible.
Yeah. That's all.
Greenwich, Ward Six. I'm going to Nick's point about scrutinizing bidders. If bidders have come up in the past, especially before other things before this council, as problematic, is it not worth scrutinizing the bid and the merits of approving the bid?
Are you speaking like hypothetically?
That is a...
Not really.
That is a hypothetical, and I don't think the city manager would, would bring us that, but yeah, I think that's, that, that if, if there were legal issues with a, with a certain landowner, that, you know...
I'm not, I'm not talking legal. I'm talking, there's been discussion in front of this council before about Brown House Property and their properties. And that just goes in terms of scrutinizing the bid. Is this something the city would like to do?
I'm not scrutinizing the bidder. I'm making the recommendation that the building shouldn't have been put to bid to begin with, and that it would improve the neighborhood to tear it down.
Right, no, I was, I was speaking to Nick's point about scrutinizing bidders, that sometimes it's okay to scrutinize bidders, and this particular bidder has come up for the council before and problematic, you know, in, in terms of problematic things, and so it's...
What were the problematic thing that, in the time I've been...
Talking about, this is, um...
In the time I've been here, I've not confronted problematic issues.
It was when they were selling the property, it was, it was another bid. It was, it was last April, last March, right around then. There were, I know where the property is. I don't know what the street is. There were issues talking about cracks in the foundation and stuff.
So I, I don't wanna interrupt you, Bree, but I really would prefer that we not make this about landlords. I mean, this is not a discussion about the Booker family or Brown House Properties at all. I don't think it should be. I think it should really be about, you know, on the one hand, tax revenue and, you know, encouraging rehabs of property, and on the other hand, you know, respecting the, the rights and the desires of people who live in the neighborhood. I would prefer, like, I don't know whether you all agree, but I would prefer to keep the conversation on, on that here.
I would.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
Payne Ward Five. On my street was a rundown house on a lot of land, but I could have bought it for twenty thousand dollars. I had the dilemma to do so, have a nicer-looking property, a bit higher, a bit, a nicer lawn, but I couldn't afford to do so. But I had the option. It's a capitalist free market. Whether people rent or purchase depends on capital, many factors. That's driven by the capital economy in Waterville. It's interesting that the ones who want the most money for their organizations are always the one to turn down opportunities. You can't have your cake and eat it too. And if I was Brown House, next time I was looking at buying a property, I would strongly look at doing so in another town that welcomes business. Thank you very much.
Mr. McAdoo?
Hi, Scott McAdoo. I'm actually here just as a member of the Waterville Land Trust, the Board of Directors. No offense against Paula, but you mentioned that, I think in your speech you said, as a Waterville County Land Trust. I just wanna clarify, and it's been brought up a couple times, that the Waterville County Land Trust has no opinion. We're staying out of this. We're not getting into this matter. We are totally different from it. So I just wanted to make, clarify for the record that we have, it was never discussed in our board or anything, so we're totally absolved in this. We don't want any backdrop.
Thank you. So any discussions, or are we ready for, is the council ready to take a vote? Are you ready? Okay. All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Sell the property.
All in favor of selling the property?
Selling the property.
All opposed? Wow, that's shameful. I'm sorry. That's unbelievable. All right, we will move, we are moving on with our agenda to Order 105-2017.
An order providing for sale of city property nine Hall Street. Here, hereby ordered by the Waterville City Council Actuary's Municipal Officer, at the high bid of eight thousand two hundred and eleven dollars, submitted by Lori and Anthony Noonan for the purchase of the single-family home at nine Hall Street to be accepted. Funds from the sale will be deposited in the South End Neighborhood Improvement Fund. Once all taxes, fees, et cetera are paid.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? I guess not, I guess we...
No, no, we, yeah, Mike wants to say something.
Well, we also toured this property when we looked at Summer Street last week and had the benefit too of having Tony Noonan take a look at one of the buildings that he redid that we sold to him on Broad Street a few months ago. And he's done a great job with the rehab of that building on Broad Street, which is off Western Avenue. And I, I hope we sell this one to him, because I think he can do the same thing for this property. This is a single-family home. It's not a multi-family.
I think that that's a big distinct difference, is that it's sat for less than two years vacant, and it's a single-family. And again, that's just my position and having spoken with the neighborhood.
You also just turned down nineteen thousand dollars from a previous property.
I understand that.
All right. Okay. Is there other discussion from the, excuse me, is there discussion from the council? Questions? All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
It's an order, so we'll have a second vote at the next meeting.
Yes, we will. Next is Order 106-2017.
Move to read by title only.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
An order providing for appropriation of municipal and school operating budgets for the period of July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018.
We have to move to...
You do.
Yeah, move.
Good day, sir.
We have to move to adopt first.
Move, move to adopt.
Sir.
Just so everybody knows, we are not, as my understanding, the council will be voting to table this budget item until the next meeting. Very wisely, the council has chosen to not take a vote on our municipal budget until we have numbers from the state, because those numbers are very fluid. Our numbers are very fluid. My kind of message to you, and I, I think I probably speak on behalf of the council, is these numbers are very fluid. We all are working, excuse me, we, we all are working very hard to, to make these numbers work. We understand, we want to make sure that, one of our goals is to make sure people see actual tax relief from the increase to homeset exemption. Another one of our goals is we are on the phone, Eric Haley's office, making sure that our schools are adequately funded. All of the concerns of the community have been taken into account. We are working very hard to hopefully not just have a plan for this year, but have something where we can somewhat identify some steps over the next couple of years that I feel confident at this point, and I hope we get there, that we'll be able to come to something that, that provides for all of these needs. And I think that the community as a whole can get behind and everyone feel like their needs were addressed, both from property tax relief and from funding our schools. So, but until we have those final numbers, it's gonna be really hard to tell you, like, right now it's just like moving, moving pieces around. It's like a jigsaw puzzle. We're just trying to put it together, and there's still a lot of input to be had from every member of this council and time for people from the community. But I think we'll, we'll get to a good place that everybody supports.
Move to table till the next council meeting, which is...
July 5.
July 5.
Second.
All in favor? Great. Thank you.
Could I make a motion, please?
You can.
I'd like to waive motion to allow items that are not on the agenda be considered tonight, please.
Second. All in favor of waiving culture?
So, would you like to read?
Please, Resolution 107-2017.
A resolution providing for declaring an emergency to preserve the public health and safety, whereas the city council will not pass the budget for fiscal year, fiscal year 2017-18 by July 1, 2017, and whereas there is no spending authority for city and school department operations after July 1, 2017. And whereas certain city functions are essential in preserving the health and safety of the city's residents, now therefore, be it hereby resolved that an emergency exists as defined in Article Nine, Section Nine of the city charter.
Move to...
Article Four, sorry. Article Four, Section Nine of the city charter.
Move to adopt.
Sir.
This is how we avoid a city shutdown? Essentially, this is just allowing the city to continue to function under previous years' approved funding levels until we appropriate money for the new budget year. Is there a discussion from the council? Now, Mr. Sherwood, I assume you have a question?
It seems like if the state is gonna be having their fiscal year ending July 1st or June 30th, maybe the city should look at how you could possibly shift ours to August 1st, so that we don't have to have the situation happening over and over again.
You know what? That was actually a question that Mr. Payne brought up, something you agree on last time. I think, I think, and, and the answer to that, Brad, is I think in the past, this really wasn't an issue until the last handful of years, where all of a sudden we were running into this catastrophe year after year. I, I do think that if it's something that we see foreseeable into the future, if this is gonna be a recurring trend, that probably actually makes sense to just move our fiscal year to a date certain that we're going to hopefully have a budget. I think that makes sense. So, certainly something to be considered in the future.
I think it would suit every party too, with no reason to object. It just makes fiscal sense to get the state's figures.
Then design your budget. I don't believe it's gonna get any easier, or they're gonna surrender money any sooner. It's God willing. But for this particular resolution, is there any more conversation on whether we're going to continue with this? If not, I'll take a vote. All in favor? And accompanying that is Order 108-2017.
An order providing for emergency funding of your city and school operations, whereas the city council in Resolution 107-2017 declared that...
the city council on resolution 107, 2017 declared that an emergency exists as defined in Article Four, Section Nine of the city charter. Now therefore, hereby ordered by the Waterville City Council, acting as municipal officers, that spending authority from July 1, 2017 is authorized until such time as a new city budget is approved, with set funding levels to be as provided for in the 2016, 2017 fiscal year budget.
Move to adopt.
Second. Any further discussion? This is just doing what we just said we were going to do. All in favor?
Ready for the managers' report?
Ready.
You'll be quick because we have more important stuff following. First of all, we're still actively looking at the prospect of a solar, major solar commercial installation happening in the city. So we had our first meeting last week, a working group, which is the mayor, the council soul, myself, Greg Brown, Garvin Donigan. And we're asking for proposals from the two companies that have expressed an interest in the site for solar installation. So those proposals are going to be due Friday, June 29th. So then we'll go into the process of starting our view and we'll make sure we keep you involved, informed. Trachtenrum. If you've been on the highway, you've noticed it looking like it's getting pretty close to being done. The ramps, the new ramps for the interchange. So I hope in the first week in July, the city along with the state DOT and Trachten Properties will have a groundbreaking. And they're hoping for July 7th. That date is not fixed yet, but we'll make sure you all get an invitation. It's looking really good and I think it's going to be a great thing. My third item is in regards to foreclosed property. If you remember 32 Winter Street, we got bids on that property, pretty low. You authorized me at the last meeting to negotiate with the high bidder, but he refuses to budge any higher. And so my recommendation, what I'd like to do is put it in the hands of a Realtor and see if we can sell the property through a real estate agency for more than what we got for a bid. You know, the downside of going through a real estate agency is the commission fee. And so that's why we've been trying to sell these properties our own so we don't have to pay the six or seven percent commission fee, especially on properties that are, you know, not worth a whole lot.
I like that idea. My problem is that the council might not accept even what the real estate agent is proposing.
Mike, check with the name first.
Yep. We're going to have to work through it.
Right.
So, that's what I'll be proceeding on. My last item is in regards to coenforcement, office position. You know that Garth is planning on retiring June, July 31st, and applications are due tomorrow. And Council Lessing has volunteered to be on our interview committee. So very soon after the application deadline, we'll be contacting you about a meeting to start to review what we have.
How many have we have in so far, Mike?
I didn't check with Bobby today. Last I knew, we only had three. It's a difficult time of year. I quote enforcement officers are working this time of year. So I think it's a difficult time to approve, but we'll see where we're at. Any questions? If not, I'd like to introduce Matt Wurzke, our Parks and Rec Director. Joe Reiser is here now, president of Friends of Corey Road, and they're going to present the annual report. The agreement, the number end of understanding the city has with the Friends of Corey Road is that every year, they're come to the council and give an annual report. And I think there's some real important highlights in this year report that indicate that place is really thriving in many different ways.
All right. Thanks, Mike. You have it in writing for me. I won't read four pages. I just want to mention a couple of highlights. It's been an exciting year out there. Usage is at record levels. So we, at the venue, right, new rates were adopted to end of last summer. Ski pass sales increased 29% year over year from last year, from the year before last to last year. And really, in short, the Nordic ski operation broke even for the first time ever. And that was a very exciting thing. One change that we're going to see in the Nordic ski operation is that in the first few years that the venue operated, the friends were actually the entity that sold the ski passes. If you bought a season's pass, the check went to the friends. And then the friends wrote checks to pay for the propane and the electricity and the grooming and all that stuff. What's going to start happening with the new fiscal year is that, I mean, this is a city park. Next year, when you buy a season pass, you'll write a check to the city of Waterville. And that means the expenses at the venue will get paid directly by the Parks and Rec budget. What the friends are going to do though is agree at the beginning of the season on a number with the city. We haven't picked the number, but the number, you know, how big a deficit would the friends just pay? Now, the thing to know about the ski operation out there is that the costs can be very easily controlled by the manager, that is to say by Matt. If you don't have money to make snow, you don't run the snow guns. If you don't have money to pay somebody to groom the snow, you stop grooming, right? So there's no reason for the operation to have major cost overruns. And we're confident that this arrangement means basically things go on as before. No tax revenue is subsidizing the ski operation. And indeed, there's every likelihood that the ski operation could turn a profit, in which case, in that happy event, we can talk about our recommendations for how the money might get spent. But there you go. You know, there's a lot of improvements that the friends have funded at the venue. I have a list of like 10 of them to a total amount in cash money of about $70,000 that emits the hundreds of volunteer hours that also went into a lot of these improvements. Trail building prominent among them. Another thing I'd like to mention is that I had student researchers, I teach for my day job as a political scientist at Colby, had a student researcher over the summer, and again in the winter, do some economic survey. And the survey he did over the summer, so you may, if you walk out there, you may have met Tucker, who was interviewing everybody he could find last summer in July. Essentially, summer usage didn't generate a lot of economic impact. That's mostly community people who were there walking their dogs, going for a run, taking their bikes out, looking at the birds, whatever it is. Though the people he interviewed reported very high satisfaction with the venue. I think, I have the exact number here, 79% said they were extremely satisfied. That was the highest category. The rest said they were somewhat satisfied. So I think that's positive. At the big ski race, it was a two-day ski race in January, the Eastern Cup, which brought in about 300 men, 300 women, a two-day ski race, something like 12, I think, teams plus Colby came. We went around surveying, actually personally did a number of those surveys. How much did you spend? Did you go to restaurants? Did you go to hotel room? We came up with a number for that one night of event. That was a $50,000 bonus to the economic, to the overall economy of Waterville, basically. So every time, we can get overnight events and multiple overnight events, that's measurable impact beyond all of the wonderful quality of place stuff that we have from Corey Road. So the friends have been delighted to do all this work, to develop and improve the venue and to try to host events and encourage other people to host events. And we'd like to keep doing it and we're grateful to all the city has done to make the park a reality. So thank you.
Yeah, I want to commend you as well. I mean, I'm a firm believer in the Friends of the Corey Road. I think you guys impact our local economy adroitly and that's to be commended. I can't think of any more good sure shot in the eye than we need more than ever in something like that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to, real quick, just thank the board too because the board that we have now, for the first two or three years, it was just Mike, John Coons, and myself. And we got lucky for the first three years. You know, we're kind of flying by the seat of our pants, but our board now, Dave McClay, our treasurer, is here. Joe has taken, as president of the group, has taken our, the organization to a whole new level. He's putting in so much time, writing master plan, you know, specifications. And Dave has got, has got our books like right down to the last penny we can project. We really know what's going on now thanks to our whole board. More than half of our board is, I think, our Waterville residents now, which is great. That was one of our shortfalls in the beginning.
Right.
And it is, it's a public recreation area, you know? The Nordic skiing has gotten us to where we are now, but you can do whatever you want out there. The opportunities are endless. The mountain bike trails that are going in this summer are off the charts. If you haven't seen, go check them out. We've got a great new canoe kayak put in down behind the maintenance building. It's beautiful, right on Meslonski Stream. So maybe frisbee golf, maybe tubing in the future, you know, all kinds of different opportunities out there. It is a bright spot, you know, lots of bright spots around town. That's one of them out there.
Sorry, that was one bright spot I forgot to mention, actually. For the summer, the Friends of Corey Road have hired, and again, this is us, this is not the city, have hired a master planning firm to update the master plan for the venue. And the highlight there is they'll be soliciting community input. And we'll advertise that event as best we can. Right now, the date we're looking at, it's tentative, but we think it's likely, is going to be Wednesday, June 12th. And we'll advertise that broadly. Anyone who's interested in the future of the venue?
July 12th.
Did I say June? I want the summer to never end. Yes, it's July. I'm sorry. July 12th. And again, community input will be welcome as they develop ideas for all these possible and other uses we haven't even thought of.